Tonight is the call for the need to order. The vote by the municipal leaders. Public leaders.
To the land of the United States of America. Into the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we all get settled in, for us to get to the large crowd today, check around your fire exits. Back of the room, right side of the fire exit over there. Fire exit right over here on the far right side. Straight out the door, another one, and hard right, another one. He's having a little technical defect, he was projecting, but uh...
We'll do it the old-fashioned way, analog. They give a old-fashioned paper for the meeting. When you get back, I'll tell them. It's okay, my planning board, again, my presentation. Good evening, everyone, my name is Michael Morgante. I am the project engineer for this application at the four. Village of Washington Planning Board.
Speak up a little.
61 East Main Street.
Mike, and I'm sorry, I'm not sure if the board should formally vote to open the public hearing and that way Mr. Morgante's presentation will be included in the public hearing record.
Make a motion that we have a hearing. Second motion. Okay. Okay, so you continue forward. This project site is located right here diagonally across the zone called 61 East Main Street. There currently exists an abandoned white residence there that in the past was used for commercial residential purposes. And this application is before the board this time. Is proposing two 7,000 square foot multifamily buildings that are located as shown here, directed perpendicular to Route 94. They are two-story buildings, approximately 14 units per building. So, we also have an access located off of New York State Route 94. Just relatively close to the existing access inside of the site right now. We're showing a sidewalk that's going to cross that entry was off of 94. We've got these buildings located roughly in the central portion of the site. As shown here, there's two section block and block doors. Most of the development, actually all of the development sessions taking place on the section block and block doors, we can see whatever we want. We have this site located in the OR district. This is a permitted municipal net district. We, regarding all requirements here, we did receive some zoning variances recently because of the appeal to this project. And what we are doing right now is on the public hearing for the planning board as it relates to this application. So, we have some mainly that parking spaces located.
Gary, if any of us could hear you back here.
You're talking into official paper, roll over here.
And we don't say anything on the screen here. Are we trying to...
Picture is up on your private.
Yeah, when you say approximately, do we give the exact number of apartments?
Can we build? Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight. Definitely, not approximately.
Twenty-eight apartments. So, what we have here is the two buildings located in this portion of the site. We've got parking located in between those two buildings. We are looking at approximately, approximately exactly fifty-two apartments.
Folks, folks, we're doing a presentation. We're having a presentation, so it's not time for public comment.
Okay, anyways, we've got some dumpsters located in the rear of the building. And from a grading and utility standpoint as it relates to engineering portion of the project. We've got a stormwater system that's located beneath the parking lot on the side of the building. We are connecting to the existing sewer lines that are located here from Route 94 for sewage disposal. We are also tying in existing water mains located along Route 94 and providing water supply to both buildings. This infiltration system essentially that's underneath the parking lot will take water from the runoff associated with the improvement services. It'll treat it by recharging the groundwater supply. Larger store vents, it'll overflow discharge.
What about the Wounded?
It'll discharge the location shown here. It'll discharge the location shown here towards the southern portion of property. We also have a small Army Corps of Engineer wetland that's located in the southern portion of the property. We are not impacting that wetland at all in terms of disturbance. We're also located in the flood plain. Big flood maps show flood elevation about 307. These buildings are located at elevation 310 to 330. It's around 3.3 feet above, so we're one under your classification, 12 feet is required. We've also provided fire truck turning diagrams to show how fire trucks get in and out of the site, move around and get back out to 94. We've got a grading plan that maintains fall grading as proposed for a site within the boundaries of the site itself. That's essentially the general summary of the project. I can turn it over to the planning board this time? You have the public hearing. Take time, Mr. Morgane, and boards.
Good evening, folks, my name is Stephanie Midler. I am the planning board attorney, local firm, Lucine Shapiro, Frank and Barone in Goshen. Tonight is the second public hearing for the 61 East Main Street project, which consists of a site plan review process as well as a lot line change process. I remind the public that this is in the OR zoning district, so multiple dwellings are permitted use. The applicant is also seeking area variance from the zoning board of appeals, so not a decision directly by this board. The zoning board of appeals will be the board that makes a decision as to the number of units. They're allowed 14 units as of right, with possible commercial if they wish, but what they're seeking is 28 fully residential units. We have a sign-up sheet, which I'll take now. If you... Hold on a minute. So, just so I can like let you know how the process and procedure work, we, because of the amount of people and to be respectful of everybody's time, we are holding multiple public hearings to give everybody a chance to speak. We also accept written comment. When I walked in today, just be assured, I did receive a folder full of written comments. The board members all received copies. The developer, the applicant's attorney and engineer also received comments, so those will also be reviewed fully. But for purposes of tonight, you have three minutes. I will time you. I hope that we can be respectful with one another to stay within the three minutes. There's no sharing of minutes, so your three minutes is your three minutes and only you can use it. And we look forward to hearing your comments. This public hearing, my advice to the board is to keep it open. We have a lot more to consider, a lot more studies under secret need to come in, including, we're still waiting for the Phase 1A, 1B archaeological that was recommended by Shippo, as well as several other points that the engineer has made. So, we will be leaving this open to a future date, giving you even an additional chance to comment. So, the first person I have is Tom Lyons.
We didn't ask that. There's a lot of us didn't know that it was there to sign up so that we could see.
Okay.
We don't want to start characters.
Do you have extra coffee? So, we're passing around two more, don't worry, you'll still get a chance to sign up, to speak if you pass it down.
I'll start on this slide.
I gave her the pen, that was with it.
Hold on, I think I have another. Okay, so, folks who want to sign up, there are two sheets coming up. And if it gets filled, just feel free to flip it to the back. I'm going to go through everybody's name and call you out by name, okay?
Not to be rude, but what happened with all the questions we asked last month, I think we've been able to answer.
So, this is a public hearing, meaning that you're allowed to make your comments to the board. It's not a public Q and A session, so this board will not be directly answering any questions. The developer wishes, if they have questions, answers ready, they can do so if they please. But this is just your opportunity to give the board comments.
Well, we have got questions for the developer who wasn't here.
My name is Brian Gibson. We've provided the planning board with written responses to the issues that were raised toward the planning board as well as meeting, which are available here. So, I want to see them. In addition, because I'm expecting new comments, that once this meeting is over, we'll probably go through the same process, and then we'll go through the same process that we're going through the third.
Well, where is it? This should have been handed out already.
Excuse me?
This should have been handed out already.
Well, we don't ask the same questions to you, to inquire.
I did, in writing, I didn't get any responses.
Brian, if you, if you want, there was a, so currently we have a Dropbox link that's floating around. If any of you received it, feel free to share with everybody that has the most recent site plan available. I would ask if you, if you, if you could put it into the Dropbox and then everybody can have access to it that way. So, Mr. Tom Lyons, if you'd like to speak.
Right here, waiting. I'm going to restart your clock. Go ahead. My name is Tom Lyons, I've already taken a drive, I've been here 28 years, kind of hoping that's retired, but it looks very doubtful unless things change behind that desk, unless we make that desk to look like what Southwood and Gold looks like right now. So, something needs to be done between the board and people in this room and get this thing right. Because right now, we're 10 years behind. A certain group is five years ahead of us, we're five years behind, so it makes us 10 years behind.
Again, sir.
So, I'm starting to get to my question, you just leave me alone, I got three minutes.
You have three minutes to make comments.
My question to the gentleman up here is...
Application, not about the applicants, it's strictly about...
I can't even speak, I can't ask my question right now, so I'm interrupting. To the gentleman, to the gentleman who was just talking, what are we doing about the Wounded Creek? Because when you build these units and that grass now becomes asphalt, and you think that water came fast during the nor'easters, when do you put the asphalt down? And that water's going to come coming across 94 to the houses on the north side of 94. So, is anything being done about blocking the Wounded Creek from coming into your property and back onto the roads of 94? That's my question. Believe me, I have 10, but I'm up times.
So, I understood your question correctly. Your concern is whether or not the Wounded Creek will impact this particular project, and will this project in turn impact other downstream properties? So, the idea here is that, again, the flood zone is at 307.
Okay, before you continue, my minutes are up.
No.
Am I allowed to buy an apartment in there? Me as a person?
I don't see why not.
I love that. Now you can continue, I got my answer.
So, so the flood zone is at elevation 307. These buildings are raised up at 310 to 3. So, we're out of the flood zone.
That's the buildings.
Why am I concerned about the building, what concerned about the water?
Whatever fill...
Coming in when you do build.
Whatever fill is being proposed, which is a small amount, which on these planes actually is about 451 yards, we're compensating. So, anything we put in, we have to take out in another location within the flood zone so that the floodwaters have the same volume to operate. So, this project will not impact floodwater elevations or quantities in this particular project.
My understanding FEMA said you couldn't build anything in and let in those properties anymore, when we had the last Maurice.
Yeah.
So, does FEMA know anything about what's going on here?
That's not accurate.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Lyons, you complete, I did pause your time, so you have a minute and 54 seconds if you wish to proceed.
No, I'm good, I'm good, I got my answers, which are really right.
Okay, next I have Brian Kistrow. Go ahead, Mr. Kistrow.
Good evening. This public hearing has come at a pertinent time to the village of Washingtonville as we ensure the long-term security and safety of our residents and our property. Brian Kistrow, line 20, Brownfield Road. Washingtonville's no stranger to flooding. Since 2000, the village has witnessed extreme flooding events at least twice, in 2011 for Hurricane Irene, and 2021 for Hurricane Idaho. These floods resulted in heartbreak, emotional stress, lost homes, cars, pets, and tens of millions of dollars that we miss a home property then. Fueled by climate change, we are more frequently witnessing a form of destruction from these types of floods, not just at home, but across the country, most recently in Kentucky, where dozens of residents lost their lives. Enough is enough. In order to protect the residents of this village, including families, businesses, and taxpayers, we must stop new development, especially residential development, within the mood of flooding. This is the only way to prevent future loss of your property. To be clear, the village and planning board already have a legislative directive to do this, Chapter 93 of the village code entitled Flood Damage Prevention. It's created by the village in 1987, 35 years ago, to guide future development in high-risk flood areas. Under scouring Washingtonville's history with flooding, the lot itself is based on FEMA and flood insurance reports from seven years earlier in 1980. There is a documented legislative intent to limit flood damage in Washingtonville going back over 40 years. The first three objectives of Chapter 93 are clear: to protect human life and health, minimize expenditure of public money for costly flood control projects, minimize the need for rescue and relief efforts associated with flooding. And that chapter gives the village authority to state that all new construction and subsequent improvements shall be constructed with materials and utility equipment resistant to flood damage, and that all new construction and substantial improvements shall be constructed using methods and practices to minimize flood damage. And while I'm not advocating the demolition of any buildings, any existing buildings, the truth of the matter is, the only safe new development in a flood plain on Main Street, Washingtonville, is no new development. This village and this board have a duty to ensure the safety of their current and future residents. Any new residential property at 61 East Main Street is an imminent threat to the health and safety and property of any future residents there. Any approval for new residential development at 61 East Main Street will be in wilful disregard of Washingtonville's flooding history, in direct disregard of advice from the New York State Department of Conservation and FEMA, and will constitute a violation of trust between residents and the elected and appointed officials who are charged with keeping them safe. And in summary, I implore the village to do what's right. Keep new development, especially residential development, out of the flood zone. Protect your residents, help us prepare for the next flood. If you don't, you're simply preparing us for more tragedy.
Donna Jekaruso? Donna Jekaruso, 39 Woodfield Drive. I'm going to start with the zoning here. I put this in writing to the boards. I put this in writing to the boards. There are several conflicts between the...
How about going back in the corner?
You're right in front of the whole thing.
There you go.
Everybody good?
Yeah. Start the time over.
I put in writing, there are several conflicts between the proposed site plan and our zoning codes. I'm referencing the New York State ECO 360, Article 10, the OR district. Item 175-52-D, all new construction, reconstruction or alteration of a building must be consistent with the architectural style prevalent in the area. If you look over on the tri-fold, the top two rows, 61 East Main is right in the middle, top two rows are the landscape, houses to the right and houses to the left, OR district. Below it is multiple dwelling, that's an RM zone, residential multi-dwelling. You tell me where this site plan belongs, does it belong in the OR zone? You mentioned before, sir, about language with multi-dwelling in the OR zone. It states that, but you need to look at the intent, and that certainly does not conform to the architecture of 61 East Main. So, what they, you have to interpret what was meant when zoning is vague, and it was vague. And when it mentions multi, it means office space on the bottom, possible one, two, maybe three rental spaces or living spaces above, not 28 units. Not two buildings, 28 units, 56 plus parking spots, and a stormwater facility. That belongs in a multiple dwelling zone. Item 75-52-A, all off-street parking spaces shall be situated in the rear yard of the lot or behind the main building. The proposal has 56 parking spots between two buildings, not in the rear. That's not even accounting for divisional guest parking. Item 175-52-C, each dwelling unit shall have a minimum floor area of 70 square feet with a separate bathroom, kitchen, living area, bedroom, and entrance. There is language about the entrance, I don't want to waste the time with it now, I'll address it later. Item 175-48-D, accessory use is instructed, this is important. A subordinate use incidental to the main structure, for example, a shed, private garage, a barn, a playhouse, a zee boat, that is what an accessory use is. It's not a second building. It's one main building with a shed or a zee boat, et cetera. Flood zone. I spoke with the New York State Flood Zone Administrator, Kelly Roche, from the DE State Department of Environmental Conversation. She confirmed that 50%, unlike what we said here, of the parcel is in a flood zone, all the floodways require an engineering analysis. And to further complicate the matter, the applicant is requesting the removal of a lot line on that property, which is in the rear of the parcel. Impact studies comprehensive plan, not done since 1995 for this village. There was a rough draft in 2018, but it was never completed. Unless, until these significant issues are addressed, we have every reason to request a moratorium on building in order to prevent any irresponsible and careless development and to maintain the integrity of the village that we all have come to love.
Next person I have is William Palmer.
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 Yeah, 10 Decker Drive. Okay, so, this is a sign-in sheet if you didn't sign for the moratorium, the Justin Moratorium. I'm just going to tell you, I've been here 35 years.
That's a long list.
What's that? I was on the ambulance for six, seven years, and something like that, on rock walls. This is new to me. I've been doing bigger politics in terms of presidential elections and congressional candidates and stuff like that, basically, since I retired in 2014. And I'm just starting to get involved with local. And I, alls I know about is this, is that everybody I talk to about this, and you can see it, this is growing, everybody's against it completely. They feel the flooding is the biggest issue, okay, but they just don't want that kind of dwelling over there. So, for those that weren't familiar, like I wasn't, there is on the website the comprehensive plan for Washingtonville, you can download it yourself, okay? And there's also, it cites New York Village Law 7-222, okay? This is the law that this is built on. And really, the question is, is do we report to these people, or do they report to us? Okay, so, that's my thing. And we're going to get a moratorium, we're going to get at least 1,000 signatures, okay, on this one? And, okay, okay, so we're just starting. But I'm going to tell you, so on these two sections, simply. A comprehensive plan should be periodically reviewed and updated to ensure it continues to reflect the long-range goals of the community. It's not done, that's in the planning board. Okay, that's on page five, that I handed out, you can read that. Board's not doing it. Two, page seven. Anything new should really come in with aesthetics, character of the village, and contemplate water and sewer infrastructure correctly. I don't see it happening. You can draw up any kind of fancy thing like that you want, okay? I knew people that went down the river on the Wounded Creek and were saved by the fire department. I saw the water, I was safe on Decker. I came down here and you couldn't go past here, the water was up, up into the streets, into the houses. My girlfriend was like that, okay, so, right. Getting into the law, 722, village law, this is like, we have a lot of power here. The village gets to be, really, you guys are not, you guys were hired and stuff like that, but we get...
We're volunteers.
That's correct. But we get our input and we are, how many people are in the village of Washingtonville?
Approximately 5,000, 6,000.
Okay, so, we have...
Mr. Palmer, your time is up.
Okay, the last two things, last two things. On the law, 722, which I handed out to some of these people, you can download it, regulate land use, purpose to protect for the general welfare of all the citizens. And that's not being done here. Okay, period. That's the clip board, send it up on the moratorium, we're going to hit every house and then they're over.
Tom, did it go?
Good evening. So, a lot of great comments were already said, a lot of them have already been covered from what I have, but specifically to the project, the lot line change, where is it on the, on the, on the map? The lot line here?
So, you have two tax parcels in the earlier. The tax parcel over here towards the north side of the property is lot 31, and then in the rear where the Wounded Creek is, where the article is 3.22. So, this lot line here is being removed, but the balance of this property is being placed in perpetual conservationism, so we won't be building on it ever. We really couldn't build on it anyways because this is well deep into the flood zone.
So, is that lot line needed in order for you to accomplish Plan A?
We needed it for both zoning variances, we needed it so that we did the variances.
And you mentioned before about the flood end, and that the elevations and how many tons of rock and dirt are going to be brought in. You're displacing that water someplace. Now, you're saying it's going to be moved someplace else. So, go ahead.
So, what I'm saying is, if we take, if we put in 100 cubic feet, and I'll use cubic feet because it's easier to maybe understand.
Right.
I have to take out 100 cubic feet somewhere else on top. So, we're putting a little bit of fill in...
We got a smaller?
In this location here, this little bit in the flood zone, and we're taking out the same amount down to here, so that we have a balanced amount of...
So, I know you haven't experienced it, but when you do what you want to do, you're now pushing the water to 59 and 63 and across the street. You're not displacing it because when you have surface water flooding, it's a whole different story. We're not talking about runoff, using your tanks, using filtration, blah, blah, blah. That's, yeah, one, two inches, it's going to work. 10, 15, like we had in 11, it's a disaster. So, all you're doing is moving that water to other people's homes. I'm really unhappy that the answers that we, when we were at the June meeting, are published, but this audience does not have it at least a week or two before the meeting, because it would have been great for us to review that, and if we had other questions rather than repeating a lot of this, we could have gotten it done. So, I don't know who was in charge of that, but you failed. In public hearings, I've never been in a public hearing in my life that it wasn't a two-way conversation between the board and the audience. This is ridiculous, that I'm going to talk to the board, but I get no response.
Agreed.
That is sick. The laws only on 93, that was great, super job by four years. But you guys have a really hard decision. You guys have to really look at this and say, this fits in that zone. And I think it's been presented tonight that you can see that that multiple apartment building does not fit in a residential zone, because you guys, moving forward, are now going to change the face of this village forever. And that is right now on your shoulders and the village board's shoulders. And the last comment that I'm going to make is that, I believe I heard the mayor say that we're going to get 21,000... that we're going to get $21,000 in taxes?
Big deal.
For this property. If it's all about money, then everybody needs to get off the boards. This is about quality of life. That's it. End of story. Just to clarify, a couple of people have asked now, where are the responses? This portion of the public hearing is to hear what the public is concerned about. This application is not complete, the design is not done, the studies are not finished. We're looking to hear what you're concerned about. Those concerns will be discussed with the board, we will review them, the board will then direct the applicant to make revisions or explanations to address the comments the board feels are relevant.
That the board feels irrelevant?
That's not what we were told in May.
I mean, I just pointed out zoning issues. This is completely, technically, that goes into that zone.
Well, so, I'm not saying we won't answer your question. Right. We may not?
Working in itself is enough to squash this entire proposal.
Okay, if you don't want to let me speak?
Who is speaking?
Then I'm not going to answer your question.
You.
I'm John Pickersini on the planning board in here. If we look at your questions, if we believe that the answer has been suitably addressed by the applicant and that they're correct in their response, then that's what we will find. If we find that your question has not been addressed, or does not meet requirements, then we will ask them to revise their project based upon that information. Once those, those items have all been addressed, there will be opportunity for you to see the revised project, to see responses to all of these questions, and to be able to have additional input. But to expect them to revise the plan and reappear with a new project based on every single question they get is just not realistic.
That wasn't, that wasn't in June, what was, what, what happened was exactly what's going on here. We're making comments, gentleman was taking notes. We were told that they needed a month of July, then come to August that, that we would get the responses. And that's why we're here again, not only to continue this, but to get the comments from the meeting in June, which has not been produced. That's, that's the stick.
I was not able to be here in June, so I didn't hear what you were exactly told, but I'm explaining to you now. We're gathering all of your concerns to include that in the review of this project.
So, the next meeting will be a follow-up?
Let's, let's tape that.
Provide the answers?
The next meeting, not necessarily. If there's still, if we haven't heard from everybody yet, we'll give another opportunity for people to come in and bring new information.
When do you get the information on the studies? Where's the impact of the village with the 56 cars, where we have traffic day and night? What about the permeable surfaces?
As far as funny, as far as when we have final answers? That's not up to us. We can give questions to the applicants.